Evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ken Smith. I'm the mayor of the city of Vader. It's my privilege to moderate this regularly scheduled Vader City Council meeting. We're grateful to all of you present, especially our elected city council members. And we'll officially call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM on this, the 12th of October, 2017. We'll proceed with our roll call.
Okay. Andy Wilson.
Present.
Jason Daley.
Here.
Joe Schei.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
Leona Sander Hunter.
Present.
And Ken Smith.
Also present. So with that, we have a full quorum. We will proceed now with our pledge of allegiance. We invite all priests to rise. Then, Jason, would you...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The patriots here. Well, we'll proceed with that, the mayor's report. I don't have a lot, but I can inform the council that the public employee will be closing the park on October 16th at McMurphy in particular to vehicular traffic because the rainy season is obviously approaching.
On what day?
The 16th of October.
Actually, he's here today.
Oh, he jumped the gun a bit.
Well, because he's going to be gone next week, so...
Oh, thank you.
He decided it'd be better to close it early than late.
Thank you.
It's gonna be really wet.
Yeah.
Right.
People have already been swirling around, so...
Mm-hmm. It's that time of year.
Close now.
Yes.
Okay. Then, I wanted to inform the council and members of the public that there will be a planning committee meeting on the 19th of October at 6:00 PM. I would invite anyone who would like to attend that to mark that on your calendars. I'd also like to invite everybody who has demonstrated an interest in our code enforcement questions and issues to come to the workshop that the council has planned for next Thursday, the 19th, at 5:00 PM, which would be the hour before the planning committee meeting.
It's right here.
So, yes, it will be here. So, invite as many interested people as you can, because I can assure you that council members will be in a more open environment to share thoughts and commentary on that topic. It ought to be most enlightening to hold in attendance. So, with that, that's all that I have, members of the council.
Will we probably be able to talk during that meeting? Will they be able to...
Yes, the council, so it desires, yes. It's a much more informal setting, so there ought to be a lot of exchange of facts.
What is the date and time of our meeting?
That would be the 19th of October at 5:00 PM.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday, one week from today.
The park board meeting with Gus...
I've mentioned that.
No, you didn't.
Oh, it's at 6:00?
The park board meeting.
Oh, yes, that's Monday, the 23rd. Thank you.
Yes, to move from...
Right, right.
Can you repeat that?
The park board meeting will be Monday, October 23rd, at 6:00 PM. It's been postponed, backed up to that date. Okay. Thank you. Do we do have a question? Have the council ever entertained such a question?
Yeah.
In the past, the park board has come to council meetings and done a park board report. We've never had one from this particular park board. I was wondering, will they be coming to let us know what they're up to?
That's a very good question. I think that that would be something that we could perhaps invite them to do. Park Board Chairman, I know his schedule is challenging, but I have a feeling that it could be arranged. So, yeah, good idea. Okay. Would council members have any comments you'd like to share in reports? Okay, with that, then let's proceed with the approval of this evening's agenda. Wait council action.
I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting agenda for today, October 12th, 2017.
Okay. Heard the motion submitted by Mr. Parsons to approve the agenda, as written. Do we have a second?
I'm going to second it.
Seconded by Mr. Daley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion is carried. Now, the approval of the minutes for the previous city council meeting.
I'll make the motion that we approve the city council meeting minutes on 9/28/2017.
Okay. You know, who submitted the motion to approve those minutes and has written, and has seconded?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Daley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion is carried. Now, voucher approvals.
I'll make motion to approve the vouchers for the 1st of October, 2017, in the amount of $52,808.44.
Okay. Mr. Schei has submitted a motion to approve those vouchers in the amount noted. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. It's now time for special reports. It notes that we have a report from our Lewis County Sheriff's Office. Deputy Cheeseman is with us. I'd like you to take the podium.
Did they have the sheets? Yes. So, September was a busy month by calls. Did you have 31 calls? Out of the 31 calls, there was two criminal calls. One was a burglary that's suspended, and suspended means that basically the burglary was an old, old one, so there's no evidence to do anything or to follow up, so that was it. And then there was a theft, and there was an arrest made on that, so that was cleared. There was 294 contacts, 30 traffic stops. Your traffic stop sign has been worked, and all I can say is there's people in this room that have been stopped. So, we've been fairly lenient on the tickets, so they've been stopped, so. We had three infractions issued, one felony arrest, and three misdemeanor arrests. The three misdemeanors were criminal traffic, suspended, driving while suspended. So, and you, one of the things you'll notice is you have in the calls, there's three calls. There's six 911 hangups. We have a real hard problem with this, and so, you know, one of the things is, is if you dial 911, don't hang up, because remember, the 911 center has an ally hand that knows where that call came from. And so, that gets tagged as a 911 hangup. If you called 911 and you made a mistake, stay on the line, tell the dispatcher that you made a mistake, then it doesn't get tagged as a 911 hangup. Of course, all 911 hangups, we have to go out and check just to make sure that they're, that they're true and not what they want to be. So, they become a real issue, and sometimes they just come in bunches for some awkward reason. I don't know why that is. There are some places that have fax machines that, for some awkward reason, fax machines there for a while, old fax machines, called 911 at some time or another. I don't know why that was, but, yeah, we found out a lot of businesses had old fax machines, and they were dialing 911, and that's what it came out to be.
Is computers reading on me?
Sorry.
I got a 911 run like three times in a row.
So...
Were these the same individual, the 911 hangup?
I don't know for sure. I don't know whether they were the same or not.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes.
I had an officer come to our home. My husband in my house, late, late, we were both in bed, and he said, "We received two 911 calls from this residence." Well, we're in bed, the phones are in, both of the phones are in their cradles, and I'm looking at Dave, and Dave's looking at me, and neither one of us got out of bed to call 911, but they came to our house and said, "We've received two 911 calls from this home."
There was, there was actually another neighbor that was getting those, and they, the CenturyLink, came out and changed his phone line because it was something with his phone line. So...
Just, just remember, we're in an age of technology, so there's spoofing numbers out there. When you get scams, that's all spoofed numbers, and so, sometimes when things come across, they're on a spoofed number, and they come back, and it's not even, yes, it may not even be you.
He was very polite, and, you know, he looked at us in our pajamas, and said, "Okay, you probably didn't call 911."
Yeah, yeah, we go out and check them all, just to make sure that they're all that type of a deal, so.
Good. Excellent.
Okay.
All righty.
Thank you very much.
All right. Well, I believe that we have a representative from the Human Response Network, and we'd invite you to take the podium and share with us a proclamation.
There's a copy of it, signed.
Yep, we signed it, officially.
I appreciate your time this evening, and I apologize for being late. Actually, I was here Monday night, and I was thinking, I was supposed to be here, and I was supposed to be in Winlock, so it's been a rough week for me, but I appreciate your time. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, and community members. My name is Ruth Allison. Kind of feel like I've come back home, because I've been doing this for a number of years now. I do represent Human Response Network. I'm on the board. I've been on the board for six years. I'm currently the treasurer again for the second year in a row. I would like to educate you just a little bit on domestic violence in our community. HRN, that's Human Response Network, I'll call HRN, is the only accredited domestic violence agency in Lewis County, and we serve women and men. We are required to strictly adhere to confidentiality requirements, and we have to follow the Washington Administrative Codes and the laws of the state in providing our services. Last year, I talked about a lot of national statistics, and I said, "You know, I'd want to get a little closer to home this year." So, let's get some information about that. In September of last year, they did a one-day census of the domestic violence agencies in the state of Washington. 66 out of the 70 agencies participated, that's 94 percent. In one day, this is what occurred. 2,305 victims were served, 1,413 found refuge in shelters or transitional housing. That's a huge part of what we do. When they come to our shelter, they have 90 days that they can be there. In that 90 days, we work on getting them services and housing. That may be an apartment of their own, and maybe we send them to another state, to another family member, so they can go there and have housing. After that, we had, in that day, 892 adults and children received non-residential services. That might be a support group, legal advocacy, or counseling. 803 hotline calls, and that amounts about 33 per hour, and it is a 24-hour hotline, so if you know anybody that's in trouble, that is 24 hours. Unfortunately, there were 732 unmet requests. 87 percent were for housing. In that same year, across the state, 33 staff positions were eliminated. Most of these positions dealt with direct client services, shelter, or legal advocacy. In Lewis County, for HRN, and this is not in that one day, this is the difference between 2015 and 2016, we had 122 women and children served in 2015, and in 2016, there was 133. Bed nights went from 3,736 bed nights over one year to 5,398. What that amounts to, we have a six-bedroom shelter, and what we have done is creatively done bedding. We may have one of those double beds on the bottom with the bunk on top, and then a second twin bed over here. If the children are small enough, they might sleep two to a bed. We house people in hotels and try to find other ways. Unfortunately, a lot of the homeless people out on the street, maybe women and children, and they're out there because of domestic violence. We had, we did 3,089 hotline calls in 2015. In 2016, 6,358. That's 533 percent more. And our unmet requests, and this is the part that hurts us the most, went from 64 in 2015 to 496 last year. In August, we had 73 unmet requests. This is something that we find intolerable. We need to have a larger shelter so that we can serve more people. And toward that end, we are working on, we've purchased option-to-buy on some property that we hope to be able to build a shelter. We need the community's help in that. We can get about 50 percent of it funded by federal and state funds. We've got a lot of work to do prior to that, but after that, 50 percent of it's going to be on the Lewis County people to help us fund that. So, in conclusion, I'd just like to thank you again for allowing me to speak and educate you folks, and if you know somebody that needs our services, please refer them to us. There are so many, we work with so many other agencies, so whatever services they may need, we will try to get them connected with the people that can do that for them. Now, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to do the...
You betcha. Now, absent, well, I hope that the council is supportive of this effort, to thank you, Mrs. Allison, for this report. Would council desire or authorize me to proclaim October as the Domestic Violence Action Month?
Yes.
Nods of confirmation. Okay, with that approval, I will read the proclamation. Whereas Domestic Violence Action Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that domestic violence is widespread and impacts every community member of the city of Vader, and whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse, and whereas the problem of domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, but crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers, and is sustained by societal indifferences, and whereas we must work together to educate our community about domestic violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions, victims should have help to find compassion, comfort, and the help they need, and domestic abusers should be punished to the fullest extent of the law. And whereas, with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there is evidence that we can be successful in preventing domestic violence in Lewis County through increased education, awareness, and community involvement. And whereas, the Human Response Network is the recognized accredited service provider for domestic violence advocacy services for the citizens of Lewis County. Now, therefore, I, Kenneth D. Smith, mayor of the city of Vader, who hereby proclaim the month of October, 2017, as Domestic Violence Action Month in the city of Vader, Washington. We ask that community members recognize the serious impact of domestic violence, and to support and embrace the significant role each of us can play in the prevention of domestic violence. Signed, sealed, and dated, this 12th day of October, 2017. Ken Smith, mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Mayor, can I ask for a quick question?
Would the councils defer to...
Yeah.
Feel free.
I was wondering what the funds, that 50 percent that you are lacking, what is that number, that ballpark number that you're looking for to be able to make this available?
We are, at the very beginning, as I said, we did that lease purchase, and we're doing a feasibility study. We anticipate it being no less than $5 million for the full project, so 50 percent would be two and a half to three.
Okay.
Good. Great. Thank you. All righty. Well, with that, it's time for now for our public comment. Yes, Mr. Wilson.
I have a comment that I want to see the school start to get going, but I found today that I, two vehicles up there, I don't know if they found the sewer line. I gave that a sewer line that I had in 1948, I guess it was '85, something like that, but anyway, it showed where the sewer line is to the school, and I gave them, we gave them to the superintendent.
When did you give it to them?
Remember, two weeks ago.
Oh, sure.
Two weeks ago, and I don't know, but I seen two cars today up there, and I heard that the school was not open. Well, they can't open, he told us, unless they get the sewer line, so I'm confused.
They had hoped to be able to use some portable porta-potties, a little more modern in design, but that idea wasn't acceptable. So, they're still looking to solve that problem. But the superintendent, Jim Mappett, will be here at our next city council meeting to give the full report. I believe that we probably have sufficient number of children.
I believe that's the case.
At eight or nine, they needed eight. So, that's not the problem at this moment in time. I had scheduled, the council is aware, a meeting with a member of the community that I hope would know.
Well, I guess we'll bring into the attention.
But the person didn't show up on the point of date. So, we're still working on that, but thank you. With that, let's proceed with our public comment. Remind those on the list that you have three minutes. We would invite you to be civil, refrain from any impertinent comments directing appropriate comments towards any individual in the council, and that any questions will be directed through the mayor if there were any, but the council is not here to respond necessarily. So, proceed.
I'm just not sure who signed up for public comment and who was signing up for the public hearing portion, because nobody put down their topic. So, maybe we could go through each person, and if they wanted public comment, then they could speak now. If they meant public hearing, then...
Sure. Okay, that's clear, to avoid any confusion. So, what are the names?
Okay. Judy Costello is first on the list. I would like public comment.
Okay, great. Okay.
Costello, 709 A Street, Vader. I'm sure everyone in the audience or the room is going to understand what I'm going to say tonight. I'm here to ask questions about the following things, and I will not be expecting a response. Where are we on cat control? It seems we come to the meetings, but we never hear any of the follow-up on what goes on. So, number one was cat control. Number two was gravel load limit. Number three was answered by our sheriff, which was traffic flow on D Street. The water issues down at the Little Crane Cafe. Storm drain cleanout. I think that took up about three different meetings. Closure of the limb disposal site. And last but not least, the dead track hoe dying down at the sewer plant. And my comment is, is I hope that in 2018, we can work harder to find solutions to these issues. And then, the next thing, very quickly, I wanted to say is, is I've had a couple folks come to me who have graduating kids in our community, and they're looking for, the seniors have to do community service. I would just like to say that I will be at the community center. I am available to assist anyone's children that needs any hours, and I will find something in the community that will be, whether it be through our seniors or something at the community center itself. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is Cindy Radcliffe.
Are we allowed to do both? Can we talk during a public meeting hearing?
Yes.
Under this? May I, if you'd like, turn that over?
Yeah, it's repelling. I'll use the clock.
I'll, I'll use the clock, okay. My comments tonight are on the legal bills.
Say your name, please.
Cindy Radcliffe, 1027th Street. Ready?
Ready.
Mine are on the legal bills. I got all the copies of the legal bill from 2017 so far for the city and through September 30th of this year. And so far, just on legal bills, we've spent over $20,000 for the attorney up north. Of that, according to the coding that has been done on them, and not by me, but by the city, $11,000 of that has been for code enforcement. You only budgeted $5,000 for code enforcement, and I haven't seen anybody approach, either from the administration or the mayor, approach the city council and ask for more money for code enforcement. So, I'm not sure why $11,000 was spent on code enforcement, and that's just for the attorney. We also have a code enforcement guy, the building official, this also has expenditures. He currently has bills for four months that he hasn't yet turned into the city. Part of those bills, which are, by the way, a couple of thousand dollars, is for code enforcement. So, I'm not sure what the process is or the, how this gets done, but it was my understanding that if you go over the budget, you needed to come to the city council and say, "Listen, we only budgeted $5,000. We've already spent $11,000, $12,000, $13,000 this year, and we need more money in order to pay this." But that hasn't been done, and yet this bill is, these are only through September 30th. So, I'm not sure where the money's going to come from, if there's going to be creative council coding going on in order to cover those. But, she can shake her head all she wants, but I've already done all the math on this. You've got $20,000 in legal bills, you've got $5,000 for, for code enforcement, and you've only got $16,000 approved on the budget for legal bills. If you add those two together, you've got like a buck fifty left to spend, and yet nobody has come to the council and asked for more money. So, that's what I'd like the council, when you sign that $52,000, how many of you actually see all the backup and all the detail on whether or not there's actually any money to pay that $52,000? You know, of those vouchers that you did tonight? When you sign that, those vouchers, and I have a couple here, it doesn't have any backup to it. So, my, my point is, I'm not sure that you guys are getting the full picture, and I don't know that you know how much money is actually being spent on this. You said 17 homes in the last two years? Just in this year alone, $11,000 or more. So, you should think about that next Thursday during the code enforcement.
Great, thank you. Very good. Next to you.
Shawna Steen.
Hi, name is Shawna Steen. I live at 404 10th Street, and I would like this a part of the public record. I, it was brought to my attention that I have children living in tents on my property, and I wanted to make that clear to the whole council, that that is inaccurate information. And then, if anybody has any questions or concerns, I'd really appreciate, they just come and stop by and say hello. I welcome anybody. I just wanted to clear that up, and I appreciate your time.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next is Scott Gross.
Boy, all that stuff going on, I forget why I'm here. Scott Gross, 806 and 810 D Street. Good evening, everybody. Judy, regarding the cat question since you asked.
Okay, yeah, talk to me.
I'd like to make a note regarding, regarding her public comment. My wife has, has worked on trapping quite a few of the feral cats. She has for sure secured two to three adults that have been fixed. I forget what the count was. You would probably...
There were four that were...
Four. So, there was four adults that were, were trapped and fixed, and then there are two for, I think, seven kittens that have been trapped that are going to be rehomed through the Humane Society up in Seattle. They have offered to, to assist in taking those animals out of our community, getting them fixed, and finding them homes.
She said, "Could you talk into the mic so that Andy has a better chance of hearing you?"
Can you hear me now? Is that even okay?
Just not a great microphone. Point the mic up a little bit.
No, there you go.
There.
Perfect.
Right here. Can you hear me, Andy?
No, I can't hear.
Okay. So, and, and she's working on, of course, trapping more as they come around. The reason why I am here is to, to ask the council to reconsider their policy on the city sewer fees for those that are disabled and for low incomes. I understand that there's a program for seniors. I know part of the Growth Management Act requires, you know, affordable housing, and I think that utilities for the housing should be a part of that, and the city doesn't have anything in place. And I have clients that have considered moving to Vader, and when inquiring... And I have clients that have considered moving to Vader and when inquiring about the expenses, they're a little thrown back from what they are overall. Water company offers discounts, taxes will be discounted heavily and that is based on whether they're disabled, low income, or a senior. And there's, of course, different methods that the city can use to do that, be it disposable income calculation or a percentage of median income or something along those lines. But when somebody is either disabled or just have low income, they don't have gainful employment, they have that set income and they just need more assistance and I feel our city should do what they can to help them as well as our seniors.
Great.
Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Next.
Last is Dove Williams.
Douglas Williams, 626 G Street. I have two items. First one is, do you know anyone needing a wheelchair ramp? But finances keep them from getting one installed. Masonic charities will install one for them. More information can be found at the community center with their telephone numbers that they can contact. The community center for somebody, the community center is across from the post office. Item number two. The parking lot across from the Assembly of God church has stretched the parking lot up to 11-plus feet into city property. Discount sidewalk and street. Does this meet code? By what right does the Assembly of God have for this? What right does the church have to park in the middle of the street? If it is a violation of the city, county, or state regulations, will it be rectified and when? I yield back the balance to any of the council people to answer this.
It isn't a question and answer, it's a public comment period.
Okay. That's all I have, that's all I have for today.
Okay, thank you.
Last, Cindy Lewis.
Okay, great. Just as matter of public record, I would be more than happy to entertain all such comments at any time with a simple phone call, city clerk. Work out an arrangement to ask those questions. But with that, let's proceed with our next item of business, official business, and that's our public hearing for this evening's city council meeting. That has to do with public input regarding our 2018 projected revenues and property taxes. So as the council is probably aware, we'll need to proceed with that public hearing with a motion to open. After which, we would set the length of time which you think would be appropriate for that public hearing. So I would wait a motion from a member of the council.
I'll make a motion to open the 2018 projected revenues and property taxes hearing.
Okay, you've heard the motion to hold a public hearing related to the projected revenues and property taxes. We have a second of that motion. Seconded by Mr. Daley. All in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed?
Well, not opposed, but I have a question. I don't know anything about this. Should I have gotten some information on it or?
Yeah.
Should I? I don't know what I'm guessing for or knowing for.
It's pretty straightforward because what you're going to hear is hopefully input from the public with regard to the property taxes and the projected revenues. Is it, yes?
How can we ask them when we haven't even got around to if the council's going to raise the property tax or what is the projected revenue?
The council is not going to decide that issue. This is amended by the state, so it's just a pro forma. Do you have any additional insight on that?
My understanding of the way that the process works that the state has set up is that there is a public hearing that has to be held before the property tax levies can be set. The property tax levies have to be set by the end of, I don't have my calendar in front of me, the end of October, I believe. And so we have it set that the, after hearing the public comment, then we provide the projected revenues and then council will decide based on what the revenue numbers are and taking into account the public comment, whether they want to raise, decrease, or leave the property taxes at the same rate. So this is not a decision-making situation tonight. The decision-making happens October 26th at the council meeting there. This is just an opportunity for the public to come and let you know how they feel about property taxes generally, because that's pretty much our only revenue source in the city. That's about the only thing that the city has control over at this point. So pretty much it's property taxes and whether they want me to raise them or not, so.
This was a topic that was discussed by the council previously, so that you were aware that there was going to be a public hearing on it. But this is mostly just to get the feedback from public who may be in attendance with regard to your opinions relating to property taxes. The council just listens to input from the public, no decisions are made in this public hearing. So, but it's the council's meeting. Have we had the motion before?
Is that, does that motion need a timeframe on it?
Yeah, no, after the motion's approved, then you could go ahead and set the amount of time that you think might be necessary. So any other comments before we put it to a vote? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Was one? No?
I said aye. We're just listening to comments from the public. Okay.
Okay, then the vote was four to one. Motion carries. Now the council can.
I don't think it was. You weren't a no, were you?
He was.
Yes, he was.
Andy Wilson was a no.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so now let's decide the time length of it.
How many people are interested in speaking?
Oh, you so.
Four.
So estimated time?
Is it a three-minute?
We can set anything we like.
Well, we just started like 15 minutes and if they need more time, we'll go from there.
Okay, so 15 minutes. We will officially begin this public hearing at 6:38 PM.
Is that 15 minutes per person?
So with that, the council will sit and entertain comments.
Can we sit here?
Yeah, no, you just.
First of all, I'm not sure why nobody was given any information. If you had X amount of revenue last year, you can kind of give an idea of how much you expect for next year. And yet, you five people aren't given anything. Don't make a face, Mr. Smith. You're not given anything.
Did you give them this document by?
Not yet.
Yes, no, I asked for it today.
They have the 2017 budget.
No, we're not, you have plenty of time. You've got 15 minutes going.
Well, it's not three minutes.
Nope.
If they need to see last year's budget amount, they all have access to the budget. They all have the budget. It's online on the website. Anybody can look at it to see what the revenues are. They also, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So my.
Go with Cindy, then we go with Heather.
So my concern is that, like Mrs. Hunter said, they aren't given anything in their pocket to look at when people are speaking. And, you know, she may not have had the chance to go and get it off the website. I think she kind of depends on the administration to give her information. And yet, same with the people in the audience as well. When we came in tonight for a public hearing, we have nothing that is handed out or on the table that we can look at, whether it's the old budget or two years ago budget or even an idea of what projected is. You have three meetings scheduled for these public hearings for the budget and yet only one of them is actually scheduled without a draft budget. If you want the citizens of this city involved, give them some information and let us know where you're heading. Give us some totals or what you're looking at. We don't deal with taxes every day. We don't understand how it all works, but if you give us some information or a draft, it doesn't have to be the final, before you vote, then at least we have something to go on to make our comments a little bit more intelligent and involved. Now, I agree with Mrs. Hunter, they should have had something to look at instead of just staring at us.
Well, okay, yeah, we're just here to, but I can tell you that the city council members are responsible for the finances and budget information and you look at those figures every two weeks, if I'm not mistaken. Hopefully you do. And you do have access to all of that information as was noted by city clerk. So if you've approved of a workshop on that topic, then there is some sense of responsibility on the part of council members. So I just share that as a matter of public information, but yes.
Okay, let me see if I have this straight. Tonight is a preliminary of it. You're going to discuss what should be discussed in the future. So hopefully, the city council, the members of the city itself as citizens will have a chance to look into the costs of these things. But tonight is not anything final. It's a preliminary discussion of what might be brought up when we have the meetings before then. Am I right or am I wrong?
That is correct.
Right, so the idea, and we've done this every year since we've been doing this, we have the initial public hearing, the folks give us input and then we have a first draft and we get more input. And so the idea is that we can't create a first draft until we have your input and that's what this is for, initial input. And then there will be more times in the coming months to give more input.
Okay, Judy?
Well, thank you for that comment. I, unlike everybody else, though, I did not, are you going to raise it 50% on my taxes? Because I'm obviously going to say no. You can put that down, all five of you, if Judy says no. So what are we supposed to be talking about? I love to do public comment and help you out to try to figure this out, but what is it you're trying to figure out? Are you going to raise our taxes? Do you want to raise our taxes? And if so, by how much?
State sets limits on the amount.
Well, if the state sets limits, do you know what the limit is that you would be looking at? 1% every year.
Every year, at max. You don't have to, you can do a tiny percentage of 1%.
Does the council have any thoughts of what they're thinking?
This is from the public.
I'm not supposed to be responding.
Where there's not, I mean, obviously.
I'll say it, I'm not interested in raising taxes this year. That's for sure. Then again, I haven't seen or worked on the draft budget yet, so.
But we do have a lot more attorney fees now.
Nobody else wants to raise taxes either.
Yeah, this is just part of the process to get initial input.
Is it like mandatory? Is this like a mandatory public meeting?
Yes, state mandated.
Then that's what we should have just said was, okay, we want everybody to show up, we're going to say this is a public meeting and slam dunk it because we don't have any information to discuss.
Okay, time's up. No, just kidding. Right, I know, I understand.
Okay, so I have a question for you. I am new to town, I have no idea what the property taxes are currently at. So if you, even if it raised a percent, what is that percent going to help us with? Is it going to get our ditches cleaned out? Is it going to address certain, I mean, is it going to help? I mean, if, I mean, as a property owner, if that extra 1% means the difference of cleaning the ditches or not cleaning the ditches, I'm going to agree to pay the extra percent. I mean, firstly, it's, I just, I don't have a clue what they are right now.
So I can tell you, in previous years, when we have raised property taxes, the property taxes were pointed in a direction. We said, we're going to raise taxes, but that money is going to be for this project. And that's what we have done on this council.
Okay. Basically, you're saying we have this specific thing we need to work on, this is what we want to fund.
Yep, and that's what we did. So you knew where it went.
Yeah, it was the coded.
Codification.
Codification.
Right. Which is being expended through that end. You go ahead.
Personally, I don't want taxes raised. I'm a senior citizen, I want a fixed income that comes out of social security. We didn't get a raise this year, we didn't get a raise last year, and when we did get a raise, it was a big whopping $10. Now, our sewer bill goes up and it's going up and up and up with no cap on it, my sewer bill, every billing period, it's up to $145 for one person. That just keeps going up and up and up. We're talking about raising property taxes. Gas is going up, everything all across the board has gone up and there's substantial reasons why. But when you're on a fixed income, as I am, they mean fixed. There is no more. I cannot go to work and hold a job, they'll take that money away from me. Why do I want to go to work? It's not going to benefit me any further than what I am. So when I say fixed income, I mean it's fixed. I get the same amount of money every single month that goes in the bank and that's it. When you spend it, there is no more until the next month. So take that into consideration. I'm not the only one in this community like that.
That's a great comment. That's the kind of comment we expect from a public meeting. You're supposed to just tell us that we don't like taxes. Let us have it. That's what it's for.
Let's go with Scott.
I just have one quick question. Based on the prior year's budget and what's been expended so far and through the end of the budget period, are you on track? Is there an overage or is there a shortage? How is that looking at this point in time?
Overall, Judy's going to answer. Overall, the percentages are right on track for the revenue received versus the expenditures we paid.
And we haven't raised property, or property taxes weren't raised for quite a few years, which, how many?
County, do you have that?
Oh, I actually have that. No, it's through us.
Some of them, some of them. Some of the taxes are city taxes, some of them are school taxes, some of them are counties. A portion of your taxes that's state, that the city has the ability to control.
And as everybody else has said, and I know this is public comment, but my question would be to the council, with the increase or possible increase, where do you guys see putting that money to use of vast?
Lawyer fees.
Oh, taxes.
This is good.
That was my comment too. I'd like to know how the five of you sit, where you sit on right now, today, since today's the public hearing, are you thinking about raising the property taxes? What's the rate right now? Is it 5%, 10%? How much are you getting out of, you know, the money already? And if it's only 1%, do you have an idea, if you do raise it, what you're going to turn on? Anybody?
We haven't discussed it. This is the first time this year that we have discussed property taxes. So all of the discussion you have been present for, which hasn't been any. This is the first part of the process.
No.
Let's go with.
I do a lot of fixed income and I'm not a big fan of property, of taxes, but I also ask the question, what do we get for our property, what do we get for our taxes? What do we get for our taxes? And if you say we're going to use it for cleaning the ditches or mapping the water lines in the city or something, that's untangible.
That's what we did in the past. The last time we raised it, it was for a specific reason. And as far as me, myself, as soon as that reason is gone, I wanted to drop it back down.
That was discussed, actually.
And that was discussed. And that's my feeling. However, everything's going up, and we might not be able to. We might have to transfer. And instead of dropping, getting rid of it, again, we move that money into something else that we're going. And keep it, keep it going. But, I mean, and you guys, everybody has to remember, we all pay the same. We all live here. So I don't want my anything to go up. But it does, especially with minimum wage going up the way it is. Everything's going to go up outrageously.
What is the current percentage of property taxes? Do you guys know? I have a.
I don't have it off the top of my head, but I have a chart that I can provide you.
Yeah, it's like a levy chart.
Yeah. You may be able to find it on the county website as well, breakdown of it. I'm not sure.
I can tell you that if you were to apply the maximum amount available to increase it 1%, what would that turn out to be?
It's like $700 for the whole city.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not talking.
Yeah, right now, we get about $70,000, $70-something thousand a year.
So one year would be like $700.
Would be like $700.
$100 for everybody.
Yeah, and it would be split amongst everybody in the city limit.
Right, last year when we raised the taxes, I remember, you were on the council at the time. Yeah, and we figured it out, and it was like $11 per house per year. I mean, it was very, very little. But it added up to be able to do the project that we were looking for.
But yeah, at the same time, we had water rates going up, and like.
Right.
Everything kind of just at the same time.
And so you've got $12 there, and $6 there, and you know, it's people on fixed incomes, you have $27, $29.
Once the average, I guess, based off the population of the city, how much of them are on a fixed income? I'm still learning here, sorry.
My only, my job only pays me so much. I'm kind of on a fixed income as well.
I mean, are we at 50% of the community is on fixed income?
We don't have much of an idea of that. The survey was done.
That would be something good to know.
We were low income.
We were just deemed affluent.
Yeah, we were a low-income community based on a survey conducted by the county several years ago. But that finding was reversed, and we're now considered an affluent community. But I don't think, thanks, confirm that.
It just might be the new people moving in versus, yeah, just.
You must be a very affluent.
Sorry.
The state set the levy for, 2016 tax levy for the city of Vader is 11.419907 blah, 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 blah. But 11.15 basically per thousand.
Okay.
For the show.
On the assessed value.
For the city itself. And if you're in the world outside the city, it's a little bit different.
For the city.
But we don't get that whole thing.
Right. The county, the state take a higher percentage of the city, of the property taxes. So if you really want to complain, then complain to the state and the county.
Yeah.
So there's, they're all tapping into the only tax resource that we have in our community outside the millions that are coming from the Little Train Restaurant, which is our biggest. Yeah, okay, I'm looking at the clock here. We have one more minute.
I want to make a comment on my telephone bill. There's a tax that goes to Vader. What happens to that tax? Where does that go?
It's probably hefty.
It's a telephone franchise fee. We obtained.
It's separate from the franchise fee. The franchise fee is separate. There is a 6% city tax on all utilities at the city. It goes to the city's current fund, and it goes into just the big pot and gets spent on all the city.
Oh, I see it right here. It was 2016, it was $5,653.74.
So you guys haven't had a chance to sit down and talk about this or come up with a plan. When do you plan on doing that? Is that the next open meeting? Or how does that work? Do you guys all sit together somewhere in the office, or?
We can't all sit together.
We're going to workshop on the 26th.
The 26th, it would be a workshop. It's a budget. Have a budget and.
Is that when you start working on it? Is that how that works?
We'll have a, they'll present. Yeah, the draft one will be presented to us, and then we can go through it at that time. Start to go through it. You'll have extra copies available, like you always do, yeah.
Okay. Any other comments?
I, really quick, since you brought it up with the I've been driving a lot lately. With the cleaning up stuff, the abatement stuff, and all that stuff that's going on, the lawyer fees, and so on and so forth. If we don't want our taxes to go up, start talking to your neighbors and have them clean up their house so we don't have to mess around. Because the city doesn't have to mess around with it. I mean, if your neighbor has an issue, and you can address it, then the city doesn't have to address it. That just saves everybody, so.
Okay. I think that that is probably not related to, unfortunately.
Well, for taxes, because obviously.
Which this public hearing is about, but.
Well, obviously, on that note, and it's not just that, but if there's things that we can do to make the price of everything go down, we should all try to figure out what we can do to help not acquire so much debt.
Okay, good. Time is officially up. Does the council want to hear one more comment?
I agree that people should clean up their own properties and would save taxes. Because the only way the city gets money is through taxes of some sort. And I want to thank Mrs. Hunter for actually taking some initiative and trying to alleviate some of those liabilities by working with community members to resolve some of the code enforcement issues.
Okay, then with that, our time is up. So I would declare this public hearing closed at 6:51 PM. And that, in actuality, concludes the business. Oh, yeah, thank you. We do need a motion to.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on projected revenues and property taxes.
Okay, Mr. Shai has submitted a motion to conclude this public hearing at the time noted, I hope, on this topic indicated. You have a second? Secuted by Leonid. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion is carried. So we will now consider this council meeting adjourned at 7:53.
6:53.